Okay. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2014, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2014, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. There are fire exits to my left and right, your right and left respectively. I would ask members of the public, when recognized, to please come up to the microphone and speak into it. Assistive listening devices are available. And I would like to ask Jenny Chapman, who is here this evening, if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman Malley?
Here.
Councilman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Here.
Or Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Or Administrator Kovac?
Here.
I'd like to begin this evening's meeting with a moment of silence, a moment of silence to honor Mrs. Neera Davis. Mrs. Davis was a longtime resident of Highland Park who recently retired to Virginia. She was a beloved reading specialist and teacher at Irving School and served two terms on the library board, including serving as the president of the library board. Her passing was a great loss to us all, so I'd like to ask everybody to observe a moment of silence in memory of Neera Davis. I assume I should read this proclamation? Okay, well, March is Youth Art Month, and I have signed a proclamation recognizing this, and it emphasizes the importance of art and arts education, and what it does not just to contribute to beauty, but to education, creativity, problem-solving, and lots of other wonderful benefits. So, I have signed this. I assume that this will be available to any member of the public who would like to see it. And with that, I am going to begin our evening's council reports, starting with Councilmember Foster Dublin.
Real briefly, with the weather that we've been experiencing the past couple of years, Highland Park has invested in generators for our buildings. So, we'll be receiving generators. We're going out for bid for generators for all three buildings. So, should this weather continue to happen and we continue to lose power, we'll have adequate warming centers so our residents will have a place to come, charge their batteries, stay warm, probably get a warm meal. And so, that's the hope of why we're getting these generators, so we can be supportive of everyone. Also, on a lesser note, we have Bill Roche. He worked for Highland Park for 25 years, a firefighter, and he passed away, so keep him and his family in your prayers. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Potts?
Good evening. Just wanted to remind everyone that the men's basketball team, that's a relatively new team, it's starting its third season, and the registration deadline for that is March 19th. It's been an exciting group of people who, the group has grown, teams went from four to six teams just from one season to the second, and now they're kind of hoping for maybe getting as many as eight teams to even make it more competitive and a lot more fun. So, I just mentioned that to you as a reminder. Also, with all this cold winter weather, it's nice to think that we're thinking of summer camps. The summer camp programs information will be coming out relatively soon, so I just want to let you know that's on the horizon and something nice to think about instead of the cold temperatures and the snow we've been experiencing all winter. And then lastly, tonight will be an appointment will be coming up for Jonathan Horowitz to be on the Arts Commission. We've also received a couple of other applications that we hope to make appointments at our next council meeting. And if anyone else is interested in possibly becoming part of the Arts Commission, please feel free to fill out one of the citizen volunteer applications and submit to the Borough Clerk. Thank you.
Would you take a question, please?
Sure.
Okay. Do you have any update on the Mayor's Teen Advisory Committee?
They had a meeting this past Thursday. I was not able to make that meeting. They are working on an event, a boxer ball tournament, I think is what it's called. I'm not that familiar.
Boxball?
Boxball. Okay. That's an activity I've never actually witnessed to see at this point, but I hear it's more popular. You can see all the gray hair. That probably tells you why I don't know as much about that event as the younger kids. But they are working on an event for this month in March.
And they're also doing outreach, so if you have youth aged seven through 12 that are interested in leadership development, meeting other teens, not just socializing with them, but getting involved in community projects, the Teen Advisory Committee is a terrific way to do that. So, Councilmember Potts and Andrea Bay communicate regularly. There's a Facebook page, and if you would like more information, please see Gary. Councilmember Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Our Universal Access Commission last week began another 10-week session of ACT Out, the successful theater arts program for adults with disabilities. It meets on Friday afternoons downstairs in the Senior Rec Center. This is the third session. It's free to participants. It's paid from the Handicap Fines Fund, and the group continues to grow. We still have a couple more openings, if anybody's interested. The Universal Access Commission meets the first Thursday of each month at 7:30 p.m. The Board of Health meets the second Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m. Please visit their website for information on topical and seasonal public health information. The website is available through the Borough website portal. The Board of Health will be hosting another Affordable Care Act enrollment event on Tuesday, March 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. in our senior youth center. Certified application counselors will be on hand to answer questions, even if you have confidential questions, and they'll be there, ready to enroll people. Our Communications Task Force, headed by Matt Hirsch, who's here somewhere, met last Wednesday. I think that was a productive session. The next meeting is Monday, March 10th, at 7:30 p.m. I don't know what the location is, Matt. Do you know yet?
Senior Youth Center.
And this week, we celebrate Read Across America in our schools, thanks to the members of the governing body who are volunteering to read to our youngest students in Irving and Bartle Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brill Mittler?
Hi, Mayor. Just want to tell everyone that they should be watching their mailboxes over the next few weeks to, they will soon find the latest edition of the Highland Park News coming out to them. It's our spring edition, and it looks fantastic from what I can see in layout stage. Lots of information, some really good human interest stories, and I'd like to thank the Communications Committee and team, Matt Hirsch, Saskia, I see you here, and also Monica and Stacy at the Borough for working so hard on getting this all pulled together.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Erickson?
Tonight, the council is introducing the Borough's operating budget by resolution. The budget is a work in progress to comply with statutory deadlines. The budget is in compliance with the levy cap law and municipal appropriation law. The public carer and adoption will be held on April 8th, the council meeting at 7:00 p.m. to meet the statutory adoption schedule. At this time, the governor's proposed state budget has set state aid at the 2013 rate, and any major increases in taxes at the Borough level are all involved in financing the public safety building. The mayor and council is taking every step to effort to maintain the existing level of municipal services and at the same time be as frugal as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Two clarifications. One, the budget we introduce tonight won't necessarily be the final budget. It's the maximum number that we can introduce, correct? So, the actual budget will be the same, hopefully lower. And the second thing is, except for where indicated by cap rate exceptions, we won't exceed the governor's statutory 2% cap overall, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, just in case when people heard a large budget increase, you know, I just wanted to let you know that it won't exceed the governor's mandatory 2%.
We're actually below the 2%.
Yeah, and we have been pretty much every year for a very long time. Okay, thank you. Council President Malley?
Yes, just a brief announcement. As most people are aware, we had another water main break along Montgomery Avenue. We had planned to make major repairs and replace approximately 1,000 feet of this main this spring, but since spring isn't coming, we're going to start tomorrow. And we will, I will get the relevant information up on the website as far as, you know, what the approximate schedule is. That'll also depend on weather, but the fashion has been replaced, we'll have a lot less, a lot fewer incidents of water, the various boil water alerts.
And you've probably read about some of them in the newspapers, are susceptible to extreme movements in temperature, it seems, or and the actual placement of that particular pipe in particular have made it overly vulnerable. So, a while back, we undertook a study so that we could figure out if we were going to go to the trouble of fixing this problem, let's try to fix it right and fix it all the way around, and it turns out that this is really Achilles' heel. So, our goal now is to alleviate that, eliminate it, and hopefully you won't get any more emails from me anytime soon about cold weather and water mains breaking. That's not a mayor will promise, it's a hope that is shared amongst us all. Okay, thank you. Borough administrators' report?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, especially since Patrick took care of the pipe. Borough Attorney?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't say he took the pipe to her. Okay, so, in the interest of, I know that we have some members of the public that would like to speak. I'm going to forego my report, and I said more than my fair share, which you can watch on YouTube from the last meeting. Here's the way I'd like to handle this. Since we do have some council business tonight, and I want to be respectful of the people that came out, that I know do have some feelings they want to share with us, but I do need to put some limits on how we're going to handle all of this. Is there anybody that's here from the public that does not, is not in some way, shape, or form either interested indirectly, plans to speak, amplify or whatever related to the comments we're going to hear in a little while about our wonderful public schools? So, if somebody that doesn't have, that has council business other than that, well, that's terrific. Okay. So, here's the way I'm going to handle this, okay? What I'd like to do is defer our public comment until our brief business meeting is over, which will be very shortly, and then I understand that there's at least one person that has some prepared remarks, and then we can have a little bit of public discussion after that where we can have a little bit of dialogue. How's that sound? Okay? Thought you would like that. I hope you do. So, before you change your mind, I'm going to ask the clerk to report on the introduction of the cap rate exception ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title. Do you need a, it's right here, this one?
Just like my paperwork.
Calendar year ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cat bank has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Oh, would you like me to make, okay, can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
That includes advertising. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, can you report on the introduction of the 2014 municipal budget and tax resolution for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
And I don't mean to put people to sleep, but I have to read this. Sorry.
I'm going to get comfortable.
Be resolved that the following statements of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for the year 2014. Be further resolved that said budget be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of March 14th, 2014. Governing body of the Borough of Highland Park has hereby approved the following as the budget for the year 2014. General appropriations, appropriations within caps for municipal purposes, $10,883,663. Appropriations excluded from caps for municipal purposes, $2,931,631. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $280,000. Total general appropriations, $14,095,294. Less anticipated revenues other than current property tax, $3,307,98. Difference amount to be raised by taxes for support of municipal budget. Local tax for municipal purposes, including reserve for uncollected taxes, $10,359,473. Minimum library tax, $428,725.67. Total amounts to be raised by taxes, $10,788,196. Water and sewer utility operating fund, total water and sewer utility appropriations, $3,942,000. Notices hereby given that the budget and tax resolution approved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Highland Park on March 4th, 2014. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at Borough Hall, April 8th, 2014, at 7 o'clock p.m., at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2014 may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the 2014 municipal budget on first reading by title?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Can you report on advertising the amendment to the taxi cab fare ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance concerning taxi cab fares and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title in affidavit of public, for Republicans law.
Can I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay, public hearing on this item only. Seeing that there is none, I would like a resolution to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title. Please.
Now, motion to adopt.
Oh, okay. Can I have a motion to adopt?
Yeah. So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you report on the introduction of an ordinance approving the intersection improvements for River Road for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance approving the intersection improvements for River Road at its intersection with Cedar Lane and Johnson Drive by the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Does anybody want to speak to this briefly? As in, the chief or Elsie? I was just curious to know if you wanted to take a minute just to tell us what's going to happen over there.
On the River Road?
Yes, and Cedar Lane.
The improvement.
Mr. Mayor, I could comment. The engineers contacted me. This is an installation that Middlesex County did on River Road at the intersection of Cedar Lane and Johnson Drive. The light is in, and in order to accept it and to be able to enforce its provisions, the engineers in the county requested that we consent to having the light operate in our community, and then Middlesex County will take responsibility for it, and it's on the state, and then the state would reimburse Middlesex County for having put in the light.
Thank you.
So, it's really a procedure in order to get the light officially enforceable.
Can you play those at home? If you're following at home, the part of the police chief will be played by the Borough Attorney this evening.
Never.
Thank you, Borough Attorney. Okay, so, can I have a motion to adopt and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda, items 15 through 20, 31499 through 31404 inclusive, the following resolutions to amend Fee Resolution 11419 to approve the bills list, authorize execution of CFC Recovery Reimbursement Program Agreement, to authorize execution of Agreement for E-Cycle Program, to approve taxi operator license, and to approve wrecker licenses. Can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, the mayor hereby appoints Jonathan Horowitz to the Arts Commission. Can I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
I think we had a second and a third there, didn't we? Okay, can I have a roll call?
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you report on the election of volunteer firefighter, Thomas Bolan?
Received notification from the Volunteer Fire Department of the election of Thomas Bolan as a volunteer firefighter.
Okay, can I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, public discussion. So, here's the way I would like to do this just before I open the floor. First of all, I noticed that we have some young children here this evening. I'd like to compliment each of you because your behavior is magnificent. Other than I wish I behaved that good when I was that age? I wish I behaved that well at this age. Okay, so, usually the way this works is it's 15 minutes and a limited five minutes per person. My understanding is that the remarks we're going to hear are probably going to run over five minutes per person initially, so I am not going to bang my gavel after five minutes because I don't think that would be the right thing to do. But why don't we get started, and bless you. I'm just going to say bless you once for everybody, okay? So, that's the mayor of blessing for the, can you do that? Okay. That's the mayor of blessing for this evening. But let's do this. I'd like to open the floor for some public discussion. If you come up to the microphone, please tell us who you are and your address so that we have that for the record, and we'll go from there. If the mic isn't on, you can just, there's a red button in the back, in the bottom. Yeah, if you push that button, see that? Hold that button in. Just wait till that little light comes on. I think you'll see it. There you go. It's on. Just please speak into the microphone. If you need to grab it, you can. It comes out of the, whatever your mouth talks to. That's okay.
My name is Ann Gowan. I live on South Second Avenue, and I have two children in the school system here. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council tonight. I'm here on behalf of a number of other concerned residents, and I speak on behalf of many others who are not present tonight. I'd like to share some of our concerns about the direction and priorities of our school district under the leadership of our current school board and its superintendent, Timothy Capone. We are fully aware that council and the school board are two completely separate entities, and that you have no direct control over the decisions of the board or the school administration. But we wanted to bring these issues to your attention because it is all of us who will be affected by fallout from any missteps made by the school board and the administration. Our property values and our reputation as a community are at stake, as is, more importantly, the well-being of our children. Recent problems started, as I'm sure everybody is aware, with mid-year employee eliminations. We had nine of them, two of whom were the union president and vice president of the Highland Park Education Association. One was a respected counselor who focused on substance abuse issues, and two were literacy coaches who had just started working with, directly with students who had reading issues. Eliminating union leadership left the staff of the district vulnerable and without workplace protections until new leadership could be initiated. Eliminating staff that worked directly with students while at the same time creating two new central administration positions has led many of us to question the judgment of our school leaders. The speed furthermore at which all of these decisions are being made, whether about staffing, curriculum changes, changes to the kids' schedules, has not left time for proper vetting and consideration, and this has led to mistrust among many of us in the community. Along with these issues comes some concerns about the overall philosophy of the administration and how it differs from what we value and find essential here in Highland Park. I, of course, speak for myself and a number of, not the entire community, but many, many of us, there's quite a number of us. We all know that great schools are the foundation of great communities, and we have a great community here in Highland Park. What is happening here now could affect our schools and our town for years to come. We see an administration that relies on scare tactics instead of the smart planning, collaboration, and careful implementation that we usually practice in Highland Park. We see a leadership that embraces the current national obsession with standardized testing rather than a leadership who listens to the community and challenges that, as other districts have successfully done. The key justification for many of the recent changes is that we need to fix the so-called achievement gap, which is the term used by the state to describe the different test scores obtained by different subgroups in our diverse community. We acknowledge that the Highland Park schools are imperfect. There absolutely is more that we can do to ensure proficiency for all students, but in a small and engaged community, this is manageable. Rather than sudden draconian changes, we require specialized measures to ensure that we are reaching children in all demographics, including those that are historically underserved. When you look to the literature about effective strategies for closing so-called achievement gaps, when you review programs that have succeeded, they all share several features. They involve collaboration between the community and educators. They involve creativity, integration, and services for all students. Finally, they involve thoughtfulness and an understanding of a community and its philosophy. This council and many in this room are examples of the "it takes a village" saying, and many of you have done your share of heavy lifting for many years. We are here tonight to ask for more. Although there are places where the council and the mayor cannot interfere with our schools, we ask that in those places where you can intersect and provide support, that you do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to come and speak to you all.
Hang on just one second, Bobby. Can we just turn up her mic a little bit?
(inaudible).
Just speak into the mic a little bit. I just want to make sure that everybody here can hear you and that this gets picked up at home.
Yep. Every year, the New Jersey Department of Education provides New Jersey schools report card. It provides statistics regarding the high school based on the HESPA test taken by a particular junior class, as well as college and career readiness, and graduation details for a high school. Our school district, under its new direction, has unfortunately taken some of this data in a limited way to attempt to make wholesale changes to our school district and direction for our students and staff. If we are going to use numbers to make drastic decisions, such as redirecting the course or philosophy, curriculum, or pedagogy of our schools, we need to use more than limited data points. We may have all heard the line, "There are lies, damn lies, and statistics." It is critical to know that when conducting any review, looking at data, accuracy, context, and trends trumps everything else. Of equal importance is the size of a data set. In Highland Park, we have an exceptionally small data set and therefore greater susceptibility to volatility. The data showed me that we are a district with certain isolated concerns, and I too would like us to take initiative so that our teachers are supported in their teaching and our students are in the best learning environment we can provide. Mostly, I learned that given our small size, we could take an approach whereby we look inward instead of outward. And this is precisely why context and trends play such an important role here. In fact, the DOE itself states that the performance report card should be used carefully and with deep consideration and not as a final directive to justify overhaul without careful and sound review. Quote, "While some viewers of the school performance reports may try to utilize them to create a summative rankings of school akin to a best New Jersey schools list, the New Jersey Department of Education is not encouraging their use in this fashion. As educators know well, measuring school performance is both an art and a science. The NJ DOE does not collect data about other essential elements of a school, as many of these data are beyond both the capacity and resources of schools to measure and collect well," end quote. By their own admission, this is not a complete analysis or holistic approach to our schools. I admit that when I saw our most recent school report card, my husband and I did call realtors and private schools, and my neighbors have already started discussions about considering the local charter schools. I was ready to give up on my beloved Highland Park, the place where I grew up and came back to raise my own family. But before we acted in haste, we went on a mission to get context. The current school performance report card is further broken up into three categories: academic achievement, college and career readiness, and graduation rates. There are two sets of data utilized by the New Jersey Department of Education: assessment reports, which is the most recent set of data for the purposes of determining academic achievement, and the report card performance data, which in the most recent report card is rooted in the HESPA scores from the spring 2012. And for this report card, it uses a single graduating class for the academic achievement category. In the academic achievement category, this year's report card shows our high school ranking in the 26th percentile. This is based on the HESPA scores alone. This year's ranking equates to a 92% proficiency rate in language arts and a 78% proficiency rate in mathematics. This ranking is composed of data from students who took the HESPA as 11th graders at one or more of three times the test was offered, starting in the spring of 2012. When looking at the specific data for this 2012 to 2013 school year, our math scores were one of the lowest they have been in ten years, based upon the assessment data, which is the primary driver of the percentile ranking. However, just one year later, the 2013 data for the graduating class of 2014, who already took the HESPAs as 11th graders in the spring, but those results are not reported on the report card until January 2015, show an aggregate of an 88% proficiency in mathematics and a 93% proficiency in language arts, with further correlates to a 100% proficiency for language arts and a 98.8% proficiency for mathematics in the general education population. This will be a ten-year historic high. We already know, based upon the class of 2014's HESPA scores, that next year's report card will show a historic high in statewide ranking as well. This is critical to note, particularly since the new report card issued in about a year will be under the current administration and will show a new performance data set reflective of these historic high scores. In fact, the upcoming data will likely more than double our current ranking and may bring us closer to a 60%. But I feel it is imperative to point out, this will not be a result of any new administrative changes, and these results will have already been from a time before this current administration had arrived. We already have these results. The results of any of the current administration's initiatives won't be reflected in the state performance reports until January 2016. Our testing population is approximately 100 test takers. It is important to understand that changes in a very small handful are enough to make a material difference in results and rankings. A change in one test taker can make a difference of a whole percentage points. So now we understand why trends become valuable information. Ten years ago, we had a proficiency rate of 86% in language arts and 73% in mathematics. Again, last year's data, not reflected in any report card, was 93% in language arts and 88% in mathematics. In 2012, Commissioner Cerf and Governor Christie decided to eliminate the HESPA requirement, which has since been replaced by the PARK test. Governor Christie touted that, quote, "We need to make sure that the students we send from New Jersey's high schools either into the workforce or into higher education are prepared on that first day to sit in that college classroom or to perform the job that a business has asked them to perform," end quote. So is it the HESPAs or college and career readiness that is the more important metric? The DOE seems to suggest that perhaps college and career readiness are more essential, which brings me to the next two categories in the report card. We are in the highest category called "very high performance" for both college and career readiness and graduation rates. These are academic measures put forth by the DOE. College and career readiness measures the degree to which students demonstrate behaviors that are indicative of future attendance and/or success in college and careers. This includes standardized testing and high school coursework. Highland Park High School's ranking for these two indicators has gone up over the last two years. Highland Park High School's state ranking is in the 82nd percentile for college and career readiness. It is higher than Matatchin's and is in keeping with New Providence High School, which was recently ranked by New Jersey Monthly as the best high school in New Jersey. For the past five years, our SAT scores are generally around 1,600. A score of 1,500 and above is viewed to be a benchmark indicator of post-secondary success and indicates a 65% likelihood of obtaining a B average or higher in the first year of college. 54.4% of our students score above 1,500 on the SATs versus the state average of 43.9%. More importantly, participation in the SATs has been increasing steadily year over year as well. Currently, we have SAT participation of 90.4% versus the state average of 75.3%. Highland Park meets 100% of our high school-level statewide targets, while Edison's JP Stevens, South Brunswick, Woodbridge, or Matatchin all do not. Over the last four years, our graduation rate is also increasing, and it's about 94% with a 0% dropout rate. This puts us in the very high-performance category. Districts such as Princeton, Matatchin, West Windsor all have higher dropout rates than Highland Park. The DOE itself advises careful and sound review, deep consideration. The report card cannot be used as a directive to overhaul a district. The takeaway from my efforts have shown my husband and I that the trends for the HESPA scores have been increasing over the past 10 years, and that Highland Park was already on a trajectory for a historic high with the spring 2013 data, ranking us close to 60%, with aggregate language arts scores of 93% and math scores close to 90, and a general ed population scoring of 100% for language arts and 98.8% proficiency for mathematics. This will be reported in January 2015. As I've learned and shared tonight, this administration could do nothing whatsoever and will still reap the rewards of nearly doubling our statewide ranking. Highland Park appears to place an emphasis on college and career readiness and the SATs, both in absolute test takers and percentage of students taking exams. I learned that we have problems in certain subject matters at our schools and that looking at reports is both an art and a science, as per the DOE itself, and a function that requires careful and thoughtful review to understand and calibrate and to solve our concerns. The data tells me that Highland Park subgroups are generally at or above state averages with regards to proficiency rate, and that the state itself, as well as the nation, has gaps in proficiency, but that given our small size, we can provide creative, informed solutions if we so choose. I've learned that the picture of our district is far deeper than one brush stroke. While it's not ideal that all of our scores are not higher, I also do not feel that our schools are in a crisis as a result. I would rather focus on a quality education for all, where all of our students are ready for college and career upon graduation. And I learned that the three things that drove us to move to Highland Park for our family are the same three things that will keep us here: small class sizes and therefore increased opportunities; a good, albeit and like all things, not always perfect, school experience; and the diversity not found in many of the other communities and private schools we looked at. The problems in our schools may mirror those statewide or nationwide, but we can commit to overcome them here in our hometown, absolutely. An incredibly small data set, which makes using state metrics difficult due to the number of volatility, is the same data set that allows us to look inward. We are not a district with 10,000 students and tons of schools, which can be hard, if not impossible, to understand and make consistent. We have an ability to look inward and figure out how to serve all of our children with the precision of a scalpel and not a sledgehammer. I don't ascribe to a prophecy of failure for any demographic. Public education is the great equalizer. We have a mobile, nimble, and motivated community here in Highland Park. The board did not know or understand our own data when they secretly decided that Mr. Capone was going to be the saving grace. When they hired more people that subscribed to his narrative and philosophy, we missed the point. As widespread literature and research illustrate, the most effective way to address a diverse student need is in collaboration with the community and educators, which entails creativity, integration, and opportunities of services for all students. It also entails thoughtfulness and understanding of a community and its philosophy. Mr. Capone and the members of the boards have not to date engaged with the community or provided a vision or described means by which they would serve our students. Instead, the central office, as agents of the board and the board itself, have sprung a crisis narrative on our community and forced a turnaround of our community with no prior communication or discussion. We are all labeled as failures. Our choices in our homes, in our children's education, in our current and future investment community are now labeled as failed choices. Without this narrative, the board would have no justification for their choice of leadership. And again, that was without any community input. If we are not a district in need of a complete turnaround, then we are not a district in the need of the philosophy and changes this board has covertly put forward to us. I'm here in front of you to say that I refuse to buy this narrative of crisis and in having Highland Park fall prey to an agenda that doesn't conform to the philosophy of this community. I'm also here to state that I am not afraid of change for our schools. I do have a fear, a cavalier attitude toward community, friends, neighbors, our teachers, our children, which is unacceptable. I want technology when used to enhance learning. I understand that we are beholden to state requirements. I welcome change when it is made for the benefit of the student and their learning experience. I expect best practices and sound judgment. I also expect an administration and board that explains critical, major decisions and can fortify the informed strategies with experience and vision. As a community, we know best practices and sound judgment. As a people who enjoy good governance, we expect transparent, participatory, responsive government, and the Highland Park School Board operates on our tax dollars. However, the saddest part about this is that it's not about the money that will be spent on testing regimes, data analysts, new yet unimproved scripted curricula, or on a top-heavy administration. These things, at the end of the day, are fungible. What will be lost is our children, our staff, our neighbors, our homes. My son will never have another year of kindergarten. He and his learning, unlike budgets, is not fungible. Families are already talking about moving, calling realtors, and considering charters. While some of us will fight, some of us may leave. These are the real-life costs that this administration and this board have brought to this community. We are here so that you recognize these costs. As the foundation of education is the great equalizer, is being challenged across the country, we here in Highland Park, our community, is committed to doing what is necessary to ensure all of our students are fortified with the best education we can give them. We are here to hope that, as mayor and council, you believe and you remain hopeful in Highland Park and the future of our schools, as we all continue to. Thank you.
Is there a question? Do you mind if I go? Thank you very much. Carlton Whitfield? No, I'm sorry, that's a private joke. Tim McKinnon, I live at 22 North Fourth Avenue. Tim McKinnon is my real name.
I was hoping you were Carlton Whitfield. That's pretty good.
If you've heard of him, I don't really like that guy. He's not very nice. He's kind of irascible. Anyway, I would like to begin briefly by discussing the education controversy. It's been a long five months here in Highland Park. There's been a lot of change, a lot of disappointment, and some anger, but I'd like to assert my continued belief that the way forward is not through the extension of this education conflict to other bodies such as this council, the media, or political parties, but instead through the hard work of discourse and collaboration among neighbors and the pursuit of consensus. As to the specific claim of threats to property values and people leaving, when confronted by a claim like this, I think we have to consider its accuracy and determine why it's being made. There are a number of reasons why I think any discussion of people leaving town is purely speculative. What town could people move to that can offer the kind of walkable, close-knit community with social capital, top-flight educational opportunities, and dedicated civic organizations that we have here in town? I don't know many towns like that. Also, for what it offers, Highland Park's a pretty good bargain. If some of these folks think that they can just trade their houses for places in Princeton, West Windsor, or Montclair, or even Matatchin, I think they're going to find out they're mistaken. So then, if this claim, I think, is not logical, then the decision by some to use this narrative of people leaving town must be a purposeful claim. It's a claim that I'm pretty familiar with from political advocacy circles. It's been argued that businesses leave blue states like New Jersey because of high taxes or a high minimum wage. It's also been used by tort reform groups backed by Big Tobacco to argue that the cost of lawsuits is resulting in a critical shortage of doctors. These claims have been investigated time and time again, and no empirical proof of their validity has been found. I therefore then have to conclude that the claim is pretty much purely speculative and is being used solely for advocacy purposes. However, there are very real risks in continuing to perpetuate this parallel crisis narrative. Right now, we have a crisis narrative that they say is coming from the schools, but then we also have this crisis narrative presented from the other side that says we're all going to leave. So I think in the worst-case scenario, those who are using these crisis narratives may find out that it will turn into a self-profilling prophecy. The board and the superintendent did something in November that outraged many of us, including myself. In response to this community outcry, additional board meetings have been called, events where the board and the superintendent meet with community members personally have occurred, task forces in communication and technology have been formed, citizens have been asked to partake in the hiring process of principals, and the structure of public meetings has been rearranged. Things are still not perfect, but to those who would claim that the district has not heard them and not made any changes, I just would like to ask, what do they have to do before you acknowledge that you have been heard? I will conclude by stating that this is a real, very diverse community, and there are a lot of perspectives to consider in decision-making. Although, I just have to say, I think if you're ready to leave this small, close-knit town after just five months of getting only some of what you want, I have to respond by saying that dialogue, compromise, and concession are hallmarks of democracy, not indicators of oppression.
Do we have anybody else who would like to share?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak?
Hello, council. Jenny Chapman, Magnolia Street in Highland Park. Thanks for listening to us tonight.
You didn't use the tablet for your pledge, did you?
Is that okay? It's green.
It's fine.
I'm here tonight as someone who wears many hats. I'm a resident with deep roots in Highland Park. My sister and I graduated from Highland Park High School. My father was a science teacher here for many years. I have two children and a nephew in the schools and a niece who graduated from Highland Park High School. I own a home in Highland Park, and I also wear the hat of local business owner. There are three things that make Highland Park a wonderful place to live and raise a family. Not just three, but three really big ones. These same three things make it a wonderful place to run a business here, and these three things are: Highland Park welcomes diversity. It isn't just diverse. That isn't enough. A diversity of people are welcomed here, feel safe here, feel safe in our schools. We have a reputation for welcoming diversity in Highland Park. Who wouldn't want to move here, raise their kids here, and then meet their wonderful neighbors as they shop in my store on a Saturday morning? We have a classic downtown. Kids can bike over to the toy store or the candy shop. The better our downtown is, the more businesses want to be here, the better my business does, and so on. And finally, our schools. Our schools are a reflection of everything we value in Highland Park. Our schools welcome each child and provide them with a happy and safe learning environment. We're so happy and safe that our upperclassmen still have open campus. Our students thrive here, whatever their background, in ways that they wouldn't thrive elsewhere. Highland Park has a reputation for a welcoming, safe, and happy learning environment for a really diverse bunch. Our schools are within walking distance of most of the residents in town, as is the downtown. Our business thrives, in part, because our kids and families are walking through our downtown to and from school. Our schools have a reputation for sending our kids out into the world as creative, confident, happy individuals who become productive and thriving adults. They leave here college and career-ready, whatever their HESPA scores may be, and these kids come back to raise their families here as a testament to Highland Park and what our community offers. My son has three teachers this year who grew up in Highland Park and graduated from Highland Park schools and came back to live and work here and raise their families here, in part because the schools are so good. These three things that I just mentioned, the sense of welcome to diversity, the downtown and the reputation of the schools are all linked so tightly together that you take one away and the whole thing falls apart. If our schools should take on a different reputation, what does this mean for our downtown or our reputation for welcoming diversity? Will discerning parents want to send their children to schools that overtest or have a scripted curriculum or teach to the test? Will teachers want to work in a school district where they constantly worry about their jobs? Will they want to work in a district where they have no autonomy and a community that doesn't value their work? Will the next generation return to Highland Park if their experience at this school is poor? Will diverse groups of families continue to move here if we lose our reputation for good schools? What will happen to our downtown if families don't want to live here? I can say from my own perspective, with my many hats, that I wouldn't have moved here had I not had an excellent and safe learning experience here when I was a kid. I wouldn't want to live here if I didn't feel like I was welcome as someone from a diverse family. I wouldn't have opened my business here if I didn't want to live here. My business in our downtown won't succeed if other people don't want to live here. I'm here as someone who has much to lose should the schools lose their good reputation. My children's education, my home property values, and the success of my business are all at stake, and I know that I'm not alone in this. This is a wonderful movement of engaged residents working very hard -- I should say, there is a wonderful movement of engaged residents working very hard to protect the schools. I'm asking that council work with these engaged residents to help protect Highland Park's children, downtown, our property values, and our schools. Thank you.
Just before you start, first of all, I want to thank everybody who's spoken so far. I appreciate your eloquence and your passion. Please, I'm just going to take 10 seconds. I'm just going to take 10 seconds, please, go ahead. After this woman speaks, who else would like to speak, just so I have a sense of... Okay, please, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't want to.
My name's Liz Estes, and I'm at 311 North Fourth Avenue. I have a 4th grader, 8th grader, and a 29-year-old at Rutgers, who's doing great, who went through all of Highland Park schools. I'm going to talk from a broader perspective. We had... Melanie McDermott is a community member and a professor at Rutgers. She organized this amazing conference on February 19th. And we have it on audio. So, anybody who'd like to hear about it, hear what happened, is welcome to listen to it. What's great about that audio conference was that it presented what's happening in the state of New Jersey and kind of what's happening on the federal level. And then we also heard from some superintendent and a director of curriculum who are parents in Highland Park but who work in Kennelworth and in West Windsor. So, from that perspective, we got this... We got a perspective on what's happening in our town as not unique. So, we learned that, you know, these people who are superintendents in other towns are feeling the same push from the same kinds of movements that are statewide and federal-wide. So, those three things are, there's a common core curriculum, there is teacher assessment, and then there's student testing. And these three elements that are coming from the state and federal level are putting a lot of pressures on the school. And so, I'm here just to tell you about a resolution that is taking off from town councils. And one of the things that the resolution... The resolution is about what should we do about high-stakes testing. It was passed by the New York City Council. So, it's something we'd like the Highland Park borough to think about, passing a resolution like this. So, it's something that we could do to participate in, to start this conversation and look at what's happening across the country and how we're being affected in the same way some of these other places are. So, the resolution that New York City passed and that many school boards and towns are passing across the country asks the state government and the federal government to look at the... At people's concerns over reliance on high-stakes standardized testing. And really asks us to take a stand on it. So, that we're... It, in fact, undermines educational quality by hampering educators' efforts to focus on the broad range of learning experiences that promote the things that we're talking about being so important in Highland Park, which are innovation, creativity, problem-solving, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, deep subject matter knowledge. These are the kinds of things we want to support. And experts are telling us that high-stakes testing is dampening all that. And that's really what people are saying here. And so, we're just asking... What I'd like to ask is for the town council to consider making... Taking a stand, to get educated about this, to see if we, as a town, could think about taking a stand. I mean, one of the problems with high-stakes testing is actually that it's been shown to be detrimental... If you talk to a special ed teacher, and I have a number who are my friends, it's especially detrimental for low-income students, English-language learners, children of color, and people with disabilities. So, those people are being tested in the same way, even though they're learning in all different kinds of ways. And this resolution, which I'll hand to you, also asks for... You know, everybody wants there to be assessment and evaluation, teacher assessment and evaluation, but not just on standardized tests. So, how can we broaden the perspective on what's required at a national level and a state level so that multiple forms of assessment are available and that we just all come to learn about those kinds of assessments? And that's the kind of thing we support at a local level, a state level, and a federal level. So, can I leave the reservation?
You have multiple copies?
Yeah, that's...
Excellent, okay.
And this is the... I only have one copy of this, but that's the New York City Council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we had additional public comment, please?
Hi, my name's Heather Wilkerson, 247 Lincoln Avenue. First of all, I'd like to say that I really wish that I had gone before Liz, because I think she would have been a great person to end this whole conversation with. It was very constructive and positive, and I think it's a wonderful thing to think about. I think there's a number of people in town that would certainly support what Liz is saying. I am here basically just representing myself to kind of give a slightly different perspective. I think a lot of the community has the same issues at heart. I do want to start off just by making one quick note about Bobby's presentation. I think it's important to note, because the first time I heard her presentation, I was a little confused about it, that the numbers she identified are the HESPA scores. Capone was brought to our school district, as far as I know, not in response to the HESPA scores, but in response... Or the focus that I have heard him discuss is the achievement gap. And those are not based on the HESPA scores. While the analysis she did was wonderful, and I'm sure very illuminative, I would love to see an analysis similar to that on this achievement gap, which is really based on the New Jersey ASPS. That said, I just want to say that I am not a statistician, I am not an educator. I am here as a parent. I have been... Well, between my partner and myself, we have five kids in the Highland Park school systems. I graduated from Highland Park, and I love it. I hold it very dear to my heart. I am a little concerned about the direction the school district has taken, but more concerned about the direction the rhetoric and the dialogue is going. I was very struck recently by something that I heard. Somebody identified a really great characteristic of a good school district, and one that really provides an equitable education to all, as one that provides to students that need more, more resources. I think, from where I stand and my observation, is that Highland Park in this moment in time provides less to the students that need more. And that is devoid of race or socio-demographics. And again, it is my observation. It is also my observation that Capone is, in his awkward and stumbling manner, attempting to address this issue. And I would encourage, strongly encourage, more of a constructive dialogue that can reach to the collaboration that everyone is asking for and come to the board and help this administration find their way to the place that Highland Park really wants to be for the education of their kids. Thanks.
Yeah, okay, we'll take this comment, and then I want to see if the council has anything that they want to share. So, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Ashley Wharton, Johnson Street. I would just like to echo Heather and Liz's comments and Tim McKinnon's comments from earlier. And I think it's important that the council knows that there is a diverse opinion in the town in terms of how we should progress going forward. And just to know that Ann and Bobby's assertion that there's a large majority of the population is not actually true. That there are many people that I speak to... Obviously, I can only speak for myself this evening, but there are many that believe that the way forward is through kind of negotiation. And the last two board meetings, Board of Education meetings, the union president has actually stood up and said, "Progress is being made with the administration." So, there's a demonstration that we're moving forward. The rhetoric about people leaving their homes, abandoning Highland Park, just as Tim says, it's rhetoric. It's designed to incite the very fear that we're accusing the administration and the school board of conducting. So, I just think it's important that the council hears that.
Thank you. Okay.
So, to answer Ms. Wilkerson's comment...
Okay, can I just say something, Bobby, before you start? Here's what I don't want to have happen. I do want to have public discourse, okay? I don't want to take the place of the Board of Ed, and I don't want to engage in a sort of public debate, even though I realize that would be healthy. I need to be sensitive to the forum we're in, which is not the Board of Ed. So, I do want to give you the opportunity, because people have a right to be heard. So, I do want to give you the opportunity to speak. But after this, unless somebody has something urgent to say, I do want to take a couple of comments from the council, and I just want to make a couple of very brief comments as well. Okay, so please, go ahead.
So, I did do a relatively similar analysis for the middle school. Ms. Wilkerson, if ever you like, I'm available. So, I'd be happy to share it with you, or anyone else.
I think we'd like to get a copy of both of those, if we could. Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment. First of all, I want to thank everybody who spoke for your thoughtful comments. You know, one of the things that I think is special about Highland Park is not just our diversity of opinion and diversity as it operates on so many levels, but our ability, at least on some fundamental level, to agree to disagree, still be neighbors, still be able to maintain a sense of stability. I think that's one of the defining characteristics of this community. And I think that it's a wonderful way to model behavior for our children, and I think that all of you who have come tonight exemplify that. So, first and foremost, I want to thank you for that. Secondly, is there anybody on the governing body that would like to briefly comment on anything you heard or ask any questions on anything that you heard? Patrick... Well, either Patrick or Susie, a school liaison, probably should go first. Susie, how about if you speak first?
Actually, I just wanted to thank everybody for... I heard some amazingly well-researched speeches tonight, and also, most everybody spoke from the heart. And I think that goes to show you how much this community and our schools mean to our community. So, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Just a quick... Actually, it's a question. There was a statement made of where perhaps the borough council and the school board intersect, and I was just, out of ignorance, wondering where that might be. I mean, I just don't know. I mean, I feel it's important that the school board know that wherever... You know, whether it's shared services or a community-wide effort to provide funding for various, you know, computers or that it's available, but I'm just not aware of where that might be. So, that's something that we might want to investigate. The other point is that, again, I was glad to hear various comments, you know, of, you know, diversity. And one of the, you know, things we don't like to talk about when we talk about diversity, and I think that's one of the challenges the school faces, is that, you know, that means there's poor children from poor families, from poor educational backgrounds that, you know, put a strain on a district that you might not see in New Providence or whatever. So, I think that's important. And I do like the comments that were made about the smallness of the, you know, the data set and having personal experience of, you know, my wife being a teacher, so I'm well-aware of the challenges that year-to-year classes change just in their kind of... You could have just the majority of the kids being firstborn males, or, you know what I mean? That just their birth order can change the demographics. So, I think the council, and I, you know, is very interested in just finding out, you know, where and how we can intersect to, you know, help the dialogue move forward. So, that's be about it.
I'm going to try to frame that a little bit, but did anybody else have anything they wanted to...
I would like to...
Yes, please. Okay, Gail, and then Elsie, that's okay?
Elsie, did you want to go first? Okay. First of all, I'd like to echo what my fellow council people said, and thank you all for coming out and sharing your perspectives. Sitting here and listening to you, it sounds to me that everybody in the room is really coming from the same perspective. And that is, the schools are very, very important to us. Our children are very, very important to us. And we all want the best schools that we can have for our children. My kids, they're much older than yours. They went through the public school system here. When my daughter was in school, her entire graduating class had 60 children in it. My son, when he graduated, there were about 100, and I understand that's about the average these days. We moved here from a very large community in Brooklyn, New York. And we moved here for our schools and for the community. Many of you spoke about the diversity. There has always, in my experience, always been an achievement gap here in Highland Park that does need to be addressed. I don't... I'm not an educator, and I wouldn't even begin to think about how to address that situation. But it is something that has gone on for many, many years in my experience here in Highland Park. I want to encourage you all to continue to speak up for the best schools that we can have here. And again, thank you for coming. And we certainly, as a council, will take some of what you have said to heart. I'm anxious to see that resolution. And again, thank you all very much.
Elsie?
Well, Gail just stole my thunder. But I do echo the sentiments of my colleagues here, and I appreciate each and every one of you for coming. I have been receiving emails from you, various emails asking for support or sharing your opinions, and I do appreciate those emails. And I've responded to some of you saying, "As a concerned resident..." And I put in quote, "Not speaking as a councilperson, but as a member of this Highland Park society where I choose to raise my family. My kids... My child has gone through the school system, and I appreciate the quality of education that he had received, that I am concerned about what's going on. And I want to stay plugged in, I want to be informed, because I want to ensure that O.A.W. is... That education is available to O.A.W., and especially people that look like me. And it's only one that looked like me in the room tonight, so I want to make sure that people that are of color and people that look like me, that are given the same amount of opportunities for education. Because as an African-American, we're one of the underserved people, and I want to make sure that whatever happens, that whatever educational support and supplies are out there, that it's being distributed fairly. And oftentimes, when things happen, the people at the bottom, they're the first one that falls out. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out and continue to share with me the information that you do have, because it is something that touches me deeply, and I am very concerned about. Thanks.
John? Okay. Ed and Kathy, forget you. Sorry. Okay, I have a few things I want to say. First of all, how do I want to start this? Highland Park ceaselessly amazes me. And that's said in a... That's said with the utmost humility and awe. I am continually left with a sense of wonderment, with the passion, and it's admiration, actually, for the passion that this community shows for the things that matter most. And I know I've said it publicly on many occasions, and I know it's something that we've shared as a governing body individually and collectively with the members of the Board of Ed, that there's nothing that's more important than the future of our children, and that we readily equate that with the future of the borough itself. So, in that sense, I think that we are literally on the same page, and I think that we're very much in agreement. Certainly, I too, Liz, I'm intrigued by the resolution that you shared. And I too am eager to see that, because I would like to figure out, with our attorney's guidance and with the consultation of the entire council, how we can perhaps best utilize the spirit and intent of that resolution to make Highland Park's voice heard in a way that will not undermine, but hopefully amplify what it is that the schools would like to accomplish. And I mean amplify in a positive way, okay? So, that's one thing. Now, with that said, I also need to say a few things just in terms of managing expectations. First of all, I appreciate the very positive spirit with which everybody came here this evening. We're in a challenging situation here, because I felt it was important, given the frustration that many of you have shared with me, whether it's via email or informally, and those that are not here but have emailed and have said, you know, "You're the mayor, do you know what's going on?" I want to reassure everybody, I do. Even though I may joke that the mayor is the last to know what's going on in Highland Park, it's not just water main breaks and gas leaks, and unfortunately, all sorts of other things like power lines going down that I hear about, usually right at the beginning of those types of crises. I would not characterize this as a crisis, because I don't want to alarm anybody, but I certainly share your concerns, and I think that the governing body shares those concerns. You know, with that in mind, the frustration that people feel, I thought it was... Given the frustration that people feel, I thought it was extremely important that we provide some mechanism and some venue for people that felt that perhaps it would be worthwhile for the governing body to hear these points of view, to have a venue and the opportunity to have your voices heard. And I'm glad that we've been able to provide that venue and that forum for you. So, with all that said, you know, so everybody says, "Okay, so where's the but?" So, it's not so much a but, it's in terms of expectation management. Some of you rightly observed, we do have legitimate governance and legal issues that we need to be sensitive to and respectful to where the Board of Ed is concerned. With that in mind, we certainly, and I have shared this sentiment, and if it's news to anybody, so be it. And I don't mean news in terms of headlines. As we see on an informal basis, and to the extent that we have occasional meetings, whether it's with the superintendent and members of the Board of Ed on issues like shared services and top... topics like this either come up or we sort of make it our business to get around to them, we certainly have tried to encourage the Board of Ed members and the superintendent to be sensitive to what we're hearing. Whether or not that's being reflected, for those of you that feel that, albeit at whatever speed, that there seems to be at least some change, whether it's in the structure of meetings, the willingness to dialogue, or whatever, we realize that that's a process, not an event, frustrating though it may be. You know, with that said, clearly, you know, we as the elected, if you will, stewards of the community, we appreciate the importance of the role that we have, and we certainly appreciate the role that the schools play. It certainly is, I think, I hope of some—what's the word I'm looking for? Some source of optimism for you that if I tell you that, as sort of the salesperson-in-chief outside of the community for Highland Park, if you will, that there's no place that I go that anybody who's heard of Highland Park starts by saying, "Highland Park is an amazing community. It's an absolutely amazing place to be. I either considered living there, I did live there, I want to move here," and then I usually offer to introduce them to our local real estate agents. They usually start with their knowledge of the outstanding school system that we have. And I have to say that I think that we—and I said the night that I was sworn in or affirmed in as mayor, that I would be nowhere without a public school education myself. Whether that comes as a surprise to some of you or not, I'm not ashamed to say it because until I got my MBA, all of my years in school were spent in the public school system. And I don't know, some of you may not think that I turned out okay. The council may not think I turned out okay. I can walk and chew gum at the same time. Beyond that is a subject for debate. But notwithstanding that, I'm extremely proud and grateful for what the public school system did for me, and I realize how important it is to each and every one of us. So in that sense, we certainly, certainly want to do what we can to effectively advocate for voices to be heard, not for specific conclusions because, as Gail rightly said and as Elsie rightly echoed, we don't claim to be the educational experts. We think that's a process that has to be explored with the public and in partnership, obviously, with the Board of Ed and with the administration. And we do have—we absolutely have both philosophical and legal limits in terms of, you know, where we can go with that. But with that said, we certainly do want to encourage dialogue. We certainly do want to encourage engagement on both sides. We certainly do want to encourage partnership, and I can assure you that that is the message that we are—in every way that we think can reasonably be heard without shouting it from the rooftops, which we think may not be heard as well, that we are trying to get across to the various people that are stewards of our children's education. So I don't say that because I'm trying to placate anybody. I don't say it because I'm trying to patronize anybody. I say it because that's what we hear you. We are trying to see to it that, to the extent practical and possible, that you're being heard, that you'll continue to be heard, and we're trying to do that in a way that respects the boundaries that have made the school system work well until this point, which has been one that's honored the separation of responsibilities, governance, and legal structure of the governing body and of the Board of Ed. So those are the only remarks that I have. Anybody up here want to add anything to that? Okay. All right. All right, do we have any other business? Okay, well then, with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming. Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion to adjourn. So moved? I need a second.
Second.
Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, have a good night. [applause]